All right, I'm gonna do something a little bit different. I'm not gonna sit down. I'm gonna let y'all get the view of everyone up here. We're gonna start with place number four and work our way up to place number three. And place number four, if you'll go ahead and introduce yourself, will be Mr. Stephen Rosso.
Well, hello, everybody. My name is Stephen Rosso. So I'm running for city council, place four. I am an Amarillo resident, born and raised. I was born in Northwest Texas Hospital and graduated from, or went to high school in Tascosa and finished out in Boys Ranch and came right back home. I've got a wife and five children. I'm a business owner, which my wife is a partner with me, and a concerned citizen. I am, I love Amarillo. I love everybody that lives in Amarillo. Excuse me. The people that I love live in Amarillo. But I do. I love everybody in Amarillo. I do not meet a stranger. If you want a hug, give me a hug. Anyways, I'm passionate about citizen empowerment. I'm for community representation, accountability, and engagement. I believe we can do that by adding a couple more members for representation, which would snowball us into a single-member district system. Secondly, I would love to see expanded public comment and hearings for expanded community representation. Accessibility is a big deal when it comes to, to community representation. If you, if somebody is not, if community, or, I'm sorry, if public comment isn't accessible, how are you gonna, how are you gonna comment? How are you gonna be involved? So I wanna make that as accessible to the most, to the most amount of people. Thirdly, I would like to see a strong, experienced, and healthy community, uh, community for a prosperous and thriving local economy. And I believe we can do that. Okay, thank you.
Dick, with the order of ballots, we want over onto the city, place three, Mr. Brad Torch.
Thank you all for coming out tonight. It's good to see active voters interested in what's going on in our community. My name is Brad Torch. I'm running for city council, place number three. I am originally from Albuquerque, New Mexico, but don't let that stop you from voting for me. It's not that far down the road. Graduated from the University of New Mexico with a bachelor's in criminology and moved here to make Amarillo my home with my three, three children and my wife. And we absolutely love it here. And so I started talking to people and people seemed really upset with what was going on in the city. And that really prompted me to wanna do something about it. I have spent pretty much my whole career helping other people. I was a guardian in Albuquerque and in Arizona for incapacitated adults. I currently work in mental health care field. And so I've kinda dedicated my life to helping other people. And so when I, when I decided to run, it was really to help the city and help the city thrive. Our crime rate right now is ranked fifth in the state of Texas, and I wanna do something about that. I've ridden around with police officers, kind of gotten a perspective of what's going on. And the incumbents wanna tell you that they've hired 22 new officers over the last two years, but that's not true. They've budgeted for 22 officers and they've hired a few, but they've also lost a few. We haven't had a full police force here since 2012. So one of the big things I wanna do is actually work on getting our crime rate down and not just working on response times. I am also a, I wanna see transparency and get something done. Thank you.
Mr. Warren.
And one of those things that Brad was talking about where they budgeted for the 22 new officers, what they've done with a bunch of that in the past is taken that money, haven't filled those positions, and gone ahead and used it for CIP, which is road projects and everything else. Hi, I'm Tom Warntoon. I'm running for Amarillo City Council, place three. I just had to throw that in there. And I'd really appreciate your vote. I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Amarillo. My son and I own the Amarillo Pioneer, Amarillo's only free online daily newspaper. I had to throw that out there. So, but I'm a firm believer in single-member districts. I'm a firm believer in the fact that we need to move Amarillo forward by changing the election time from May of even-numbered years, or odd-numbered years, to November of even-numbered years so that we can take advantage of the great turnout of the general election. So that'll save Amarillo money. That will save taxpayers the, the burden of having elections bought and paid for, and we need to move things forward. So without spending a bunch more time and giving other people the opportunity to talk, I'd appreciate it if you'd consider voting for me. I look forward to seeing all of y'all at the ballot box. Thanks.
Now, running for city council, place number two, is Ms. Triva Harper.
Hi, how are y'all doing? Can you hear me okay? Okay, good. I usually don't have trouble, but every once in a while, I don't project quite as good as that. Anyway, the first thing I wanna do is I wanted to take a moment to thank all of our soldiers that are here, all of our ex-military, all of the people that have served in military. Thank you all very much. I come from a large military family. I have my, my father and two of my uncles served in World War II. I have a brother who served in Vietnam. I have three other brothers and a sister who served in the military in peacetime. I had eight or nine nephews in the military during the Gulf War broke out. Eight of them served in combat. One of them didn't come home. So the military is something that I feel very passionate about. It's not something that, I may not have powers as a city council member to do a whole lot of things as far as deciding what happens with their military and where they go, but I do support the military very much. I'm not originally from Amarillo. I moved here in 2001, but my mother was from this area. And I ended up coming back here through a sordid bunch of events, so I don't have enough time to tell y'all about all that. But Amarillo kinda got in my blood and I'm still here. And I raised my kids here. I've, I've worked here. And I've kinda followed politics a lot, but I followed mostly the national ones. And I've followed the local ones a little bit, but then what really got my attention was I lived over off of, off Sixth Street, and I was walking down Sixth Street in the afternoon, t-shirt and blue jeans, and a gentleman tried to pick me up because he thought I was a prostitute. I said, "If a woman can't walk down a street by herself in the middle of the daytime, we have a problem with crime in our, in our city. And we need to do something about that." And that's something I very much would like to do. I'd like to work with our police department, have them funded as to what they need, have them trained as to what they need, and help them to, help them to do their job. And I'd like to work with organizations like No Boundaries so that we can administer to the prostitutes and to the pimps and to get them out of that lifestyle and get them back on track to be, to be contributing citizens. Thank you.
City council, place number one, Hayden Pettigo.
Hi, how are y'all? My name's Hayden Pettigo. I'm running for city council, place one. I am 25 years old. Make me the youngest candidate running this time. I've lived in Amarillo my entire life. I love living in this incredible part of Texas. Son of a Baptist preacher, my dad, fun fact, actually was a preacher out at the Petrotruck stop for all of my teen years. There, there's a chapel out there. The reason why I decided to run for city councils, I believe that Amarillo utilizing at-large elections combined with low voter turnout is the reason that our city isn't being represented as a whole and only certain parts are being developed. I believe that a mayor and four council members elected at large representing 200,000 residents isn't working. We're utilizing an antique form of government that makes more sense for a city the size of Dumas, Texas with 12,000, 13,000 residents, not 200,000 residents. I've said before, I'm all for progress and development, but I'm not for development that's going to endet future generations of Amarillo. Another reason why I decided to run is a lot of you all know that Amarillo's young population isn't involved in our local politics. They don't know what's happening with our government. And nearly 40% of Amarillo's population is under the age of 30. I wanna know why we aren't being involved. I wanna be involved. And I've said before, if you're under 30 in Amarillo and you don't have a college degree, it is hard to find a job. We need to better utilize our young population because that's the future of our city. I wanna say thank you all for letting me speak. I'd really appreciate your vote on May 4th. Thank you.
All right, that's the easy part. Now comes the hard part. What I'm, how I'm gonna do this is I'm gonna go and order, the questions are in no particular order, but I'm gonna go in order starting with place four and go up, Mr. Stephen, and then I might switch it up and start place one and come down. Let's see, let's go ahead and get started. All right, quick one. Are you pro-education or anti-education?
That's an easy one. I'm very much pro-education. I've got five children, like I said, and each one of their education is, is of utmost importance to me. We've already got my, my youngest thinking about what he wants to do when he gets older, which he wants to be president. And so I told him, I said, you know, "We're probably gonna have to get you into college so you can, so you can get that accomplished." So yes, pro-education.
Obviously, I'm gonna have to say I am pro-education. My sister's an educator. My mother was an educator. And I have children, one who has graduated already and three more who are on their way. I think we need to do more for our schools. You know, a lot of, a lot of what the AISD trustee candidates were talking about earlier, you know, not all of them have to go to college, but they need to be prepared for the real world. So absolutely about education.
How many people have ever said that they were against education? I'm pro-education. My, my mother is a teacher. My grandmother on my mother's side was a teacher. My aunt, my great aunt, she was one of the original faculty members of Amarillo College. And the list just goes on and on. My wife has a teaching certificate, so we're pro-education. I believe that all good things start from education, so.
Well, I do believe in education, but I also believe in options in education. I strongly support our schools, but I also strongly support any family that wants to homeschool. I like the idea of the voucher system because I think the voucher system encourages the schools to strive harder, to do better, and to, to raise their own level of excellence so that way they can kind of, in a way, compete with each other. That way families have a choice, and if they go to the school that's the best, then the schools are gonna be better and they're gonna strive to do better. But I would really like to do more to help with the homeschool parents because not, not, they don't get a lot of attention. They don't get a lot of appreciation. I homeschooled my children for two years and I had to quit because as a single mom, I just couldn't do it. I couldn't homeschool my kids. I didn't have the money to pay for the materials. I didn't have the time to give them all the education that they needed, so I put them back in school. I would love to see programs to help homeschool parents be able to do more for their children. Thank you.
I'm 1,000% pro-education. Again, referencing Amarillo's youth population, it's the future of our city, and a better educated youth population will make a better city. I will say I was homeschooled the whole way through by very politically-involved parents, so that's probably, probably why I'm running for city council now is because that was something they ingrained with me from a pretty young age. But absolutely, we should have the best education here. And again, like Tom said, nobody's gonna be anti-education, but absolutely, yeah.
That was an easy one. What will you do to ensure the protection of civil liberties, such as the free speech and rights, under the Texas Open Meetings Act? Hayden, go right ahead.
I think Amarillo currently has been facing a crisis somewhat with stifling free speech. I've said before that moving the meeting times to me was even a form of censorship. I think when you make a meeting, a public city meeting inaccessible to a lot of working-class people, to me, that is a form of censorship. I think there's been a lot of stifling of free speech, even when it comes to online, of people removing things or you're not supposed to say certain things. But I think, again, even on a city level, I think restoring public comment to the time it should be where it's accessible to working-class people is my, my main thing I'm pushing for. Because to me, that is absolute stifling of free speech by moving the meeting. And I, I think sometimes that Open Meetings Act can be somewhat restrictive in terms of getting your council members to talk with you about things you wanna know about. So I'll just leave it there.
Well, as a person who supports the Constitution, I very much support free speech. And I would very much like to get the open, excuse me, the public comments rebroadcast. I'd like to have the city, the meetings in the afternoon when people are home from work and can go. Because you can't go to the meeting if you have to be at work. I can't go to the meetings now because I work days and I can't go. So I totally understand what that's like, and that's something that we need to change. I would also very much like to explore new options, get new ideas from people, and find, find ways that we can expand the ability for people to express their opinion, whether that's online comment, whether that's, that's any kind of extra meeting, or whatever we gotta do, whatever ideas people have, I very much would love to hear those and get feedback from the community and find out what works for the people and implement those things so that we can get more feedback from the people. And we have to be, as city council members, we have to understand that we're gonna get criticism and we can't get our feelings hurt because everyone has a right to their opinion.
Mr. Warren.
I absolutely do not understand why there was ever censorship through the Amarillo City Council. I've got a friend at the back of the room named James King, and he said, he actually said that one of the biggest problems, one of the biggest things that they did that took away from free speech at the council meetings was when they moved the time and started limiting the amount of people that could actually speak. You know, when they, they moved that time to where it was the beginning of the meeting and still the, until the end, you didn't get the opportunity to discuss your opinions on things that happened during the meeting. I think they should reinstate public comment time. I think it should be broadcast like it was. I think it should be moved back to the end of the meeting. I think they should move the meetings to six o'clock in the evening where people have the ability to see it. People have the ability to participate. And I think that they should stay there and listen till everybody has had the opportunity to speak.
Tom always steals my thunder. It never fails. As elected officials, we are supposed to be the voice of the people, not, not the voice of ourselves. And that requires us listening to everything that everybody has to say. And, you know, as your council member, I would not only move the meetings, I am also for having town halls monthly or every other month. We need to do everything we can to listen to you guys because you guys are gonna tell us what to do. You're our boss. You're gonna tell us what you want, and we should be acting with that in mind.
Well, I am definitely much a supporter of the First Amendment. That's honestly why, kinda what got me fired up to run was the, again, apparent stifling of public comment, changing it to seven, then changing it to 12. And, you know, there's lots of excuses that, well, it doesn't matter what time you put it at, you're not gonna find the best time for everyone. Well, exactly. You're not gonna find the best time for everyone, but you are there to work to find the best time for the most people. You know, the, the council's personal schedule shouldn't become before the people's voice. They work for you, not the other way around. That's mine.
Would you be willing to support an ordinance or a policy requiring city council to seek qualified local businesses to perform services the city puts out to bid first before accepting outside companies? Example, if a local company had a heads-up about the parking meters, we could have filled that, we could have filled that spot. Go right ahead.
There is no reason that we shouldn't be offering local companies the opportunity to do the jobs in Amarillo. That's one of the biggest problems that we have. Everybody in Amarillo that's, that's involved in politics, that's involved in government, thinks you need to go outside to hire other people. Well, let me tell you something. If you've got businesses here in town that are doing the same job, why don't you support local businesses first? You know, we've got a council person that's in, seeking reelection, that's endorsed by Amarillo Matters, and that council person always talks about how important it is to go ahead and support local business. Buy local, buy local. But then when something comes up, they always go out of town. I have a problem with that and it's gotta stop.
I'm just gonna agree with Tom. I, I do, I believe that there should be an ordinance in place where we, where we look directly at our resources. If you are a person that, that works with other business owners or other entrepreneurs, you know the most talented people that, that can do any of the jobs live right here in your, in your city. I go to, when I need something done, I go to Facebook and my friends will tell me a local entrepreneur that does it just as well, if not better, than an outside corporation because they care about their business and they care about you.
I 100% think we should prioritize local businesses first. It shouldn't be a bidding process of whoever throws their name in because obviously Amarillo is a decently-sized city. It's not that, it's not like we don't have the pool of businesses to utilize here to do all of these jobs. I would even say, even if a business here were a little bit more than an outside-of-town business, we still, still should take priority over that because it's better utilizing our own economy. So that should obviously take priority over anything utilized local. Because obviously, we have the pool of people and businesses to utilize here. We don't have to go outside of Amarillo.
Well, it's getting hard to add to that. I agree with what everyone's been saying. And I think that if we don't use our own businesses in our own town, we are defeating our own purpose of being here. I mean, we're just, just buckloads of money going out of town to other, other places and we're not helping our own city. And that, to me, that just doesn't make any sense at all. So absolutely, I do support using local businesses for as much and as many things as we possibly can.
I don't support, no, I'm just kidding. Of course, I support, you know, the city should be buying locally. And, and I'm gonna make a point here. Amarillo Matters is supporting all five incumbents, and they just spent $40,000 on, on those incumbents consulting and advertising and materials. Not a dime of it was from Amarillo. It was all out of the state of Texas. Oh, I think some of it may have been from Houston, but it was not in Amarillo. We need to fund our businesses here. We gotta keep the money here in Amarillo. That's how you grow an economy. Thank you.
If you could change only one thing as a commissioner, what would it be and why?
If I could change one thing, it would be going to single-member districts because that will fix all of our other issues, or a lot of them anyway. We need single-member districts so we have representation for every single neighborhood, every single person in this city. So you get to pick who's representing you instead of someone who lives on the other side of town and doesn't understand the struggles that you're going through.
I just wanna echo one person, so I'm gonna say the same thing. Single-member districts, that's a huge deal. And, I mean, not just single-member districts, but adding the additional members. We are, we are a large city. We're classified as a large city at 196, I believe. We've got a lot of people and four, four council members and one mayor is stretched, stretched real thin. So we need to add those extra members and, and of course, then it would snowball into a single-member district, and that's what we need.
I have to echo because single-member districts is the absolute most important thing. I've said before that I try not to get hung up on the symptoms. I wanna deal with the actual disease. And I think the reason why a lot of communities in Amarillo have been held back for decades is because of our at-large government. I mean, for example, think about the Martin Road hike that people have complained about and the council have said, "Well, we didn't know that was a problem." Well, of course you didn't. You're not from that area. That's not gonna be relevant to you at all. That's the reason why currently they announced the city, the neighborhood plan for North Heights, East Ridge, and I believe San Jacinto. And that total plan was $10.5 million, which that's barely enough to scrape the surface of what needs to be done in those communities because it's been held back for decades because our government has ignored these communities because they don't live in those communities. So single-member districts is the absolute number-one thing we need to change in Amarillo.
Well, you know, there's so many things I would really like to do differently in Amarillo. It's almost impossible for me to sit here and tell you, there's one thing I wanna change, and that would be the only thing I could change, if I could change it. So what I'm really gonna say is, well, the one thing I would change is I would vote out every single incumbent.
Everybody was right, especially Triva. But I'll say this, I'm not gonna settle for just one thing. If, if I am elected, if you guys will elect me, starting on May 5th, we'll start talking about single-member districts. We'll start talking about changing the city charter for election time. We'll start talking about no-kill shelter. We'll start talking about a lot of the things. We'll start talking about the community plans that have been on the back burner for the last two years. And we're gonna start working. You know, the truth of the matter is, is the problem that we have is that the people that were elected last time did not have your best interests in heart. So if you can do one thing, go to the ballot box, figure out who the incumbents are, and vote for somebody else.
Going back to single-member districts, I've gotta tell a quick little story. My wife, my lovely wife, the other day asked me, "What exactly is a single-member district?" So me, not knowing how to explain things very well, I just, "Well, it's kinda like you've got your own little areas. You've got San Jacinto, you've got your North Heights, and you've got a representative for each and every one." Her eyes lit up and she's, "It's the Hunger Games! Yes!" She wants to be district whip. But sticking with the single-member districts, how would y'all go about getting that accomplished?
I think first and foremost, it's educating the residents of Amarillo about why it's important. Because people aren't gonna vote for things if they don't know that's detrimental to them. It's been, it's been brought to a vote twice and hasn't worked. And nobody, it hasn't gone through, and people have said, "Well, if it hasn't gone through twice, why try it again?" I say because I don't think people understand the significance of it. Like, if you read on a ballot, "at-large" or "single-member district," you may not know what that means. But if somebody knows this could be a thing that could benefit your community and you would have somebody that would be a voice for you, that's way more of a reason to vote for that. Because I know you can't just get in council and go, "We're changing it." It would need to be something that would require a vote. We would have to go further, but, further, but we would have to educate the residents on why we need to vote for that. I think that's the first biggest step, is educating the population on why we need single-member districts.
On single-member districts, I would very much like to structure it in a way that we can make sure that someone from this neighborhood doesn't move to that neighborhood and then they are over that neighborhood so that we have the same clique running the town. I think we need to have term limits, and I think we need to structure it in a way that we actually have the people being represented and not just special interests or special groups of people that are coming in there and still doing the same thing that we've got right now. And we, I mean, the issues that we have right now can still happen with single-member districts. Now that said, I like single-member districts, but we need to make sure that we structure it in such a way that it doesn't get mistreated.
Well, kind of like what Tom was saying earlier, is getting up there, getting us elected, and letting us talk about it. Getting in there and actually making that a priority and not come around next, in, in the next two years, then talk about it again at the next elections and say, "You know, we're pushing for that single-member district. If you've, if you've noticed, we started a committee." So, yeah, it's, it's getting in there and making it priority and educating the people. And again, if you vote three of us in there, that'll probably happen.
It's really hard to go. It's really hard to go at the end of that question because, you know, there's not much I can add. But, you know, it's really important that we, we flip three seats to change the charter. There has to be a vote and we gotta have three seats because none of the incumbents are for single member districts. Because they wanna hold on to that power that they have. So it's just very important that you guys get out and vote.
There's an interesting thing about this forum tonight. These people up here, and myself, and the mayoral candidates and everything, we all came, we all showed up. Everybody was extended the invitation to come to this forum. This wasn't just a challenger forum, this was for everyone. This was for everyone that's running in every sort of office and they had the opportunity. So they showed where their priority was at. For single member districts, it's going to take a charter change. We're going to have to have the right people in office to go ahead and push for that charter change. You're going to have to elect three people that have the interest of the community at heart to press for that. And so, the truth of the matter is, is it's very important in this day of, of media that we have now with the HP Pioneer, with the Pioneer, with a bunch of the other organizations, we have the ability to go ahead and put the word out and explain single member districts. But you're gonna have to make sure that the right people are elected. And I can't say it too many times. You have to look at the people there and the incumbents and vote for somebody else. I don't care if you vote for me for place three, I don't care if you vote for Brad Torch, just vote for somebody other than the incumbents.
Now, this one is to all candidates. What is your stance on the red light cameras and automated parking meters? Just don't piss by it up here.
The red light cameras, they are already a thing of the past. Our own Lieutenant Governor is working to get them removed. We and our city council is voting to put more in. It's wasteful. It's, it's predatory. It's just, it's unconstitutional. I'm against them. The, the parking meters, another, another thing I'm against. I don't think you should be double tax residents for free public services. It's wrong. It's unethical.
I, I hope what I'm about to say gets on the front page of the Globe News tomorrow. Do not pay your red light tickets. And the reason why is red light cameras are borderline illegal. The safety of them is absolutely disputed. It's an absolute racket on the city. And beyond that, again, we're talking about, do we pay companies locally? That is a business out of Phoenix, Arizona. It's not even a, they make it look like a menacing legal summons, like you're gonna be arrested. You won't be. It's not even a criminal offense and it's an absolute waste of our money on something that's not making the city safer at all. And then, we need to get rid of it. It's absolutely ridiculous and it is illegal.
Well, I'm, I'm not a fan of the red light cameras either. I think that they are almost unconstitutional because it's kinda hard to face your accuser when your accuser's a camera. So I'm kinda not a fan of that. I don't think that's a very good thing. And so I see it more as a cash grab. And I see the parking meters as the same thing. When they put in the ballpark down there, they let the ballpark have the permission to charge parking in all the part, free parking lots downtown. Does the city of Amarillo get $1 of that money? No. They could've taken 15% of it in the contract, but they refused and they let them keep all of the money for the parking, parking costs. So now they put in parking meters so they can charge the people who work down there, not the people going to the games for their parking. And now we're gonna get golf carts, so if you park in the free parking, you still have to pay to get to where you're going to park, to go downtown and do business. It's a cash grab. This is their way of getting around, raising your taxes so that way you'll think they did something good for the city.
There was a word that was set up here that I really liked and that was predatory. These are all predatory. All of these things are predatory. And they make no bones about it. When you go to the meetings and you actually listen to what they have to say, when they were putting on the meetings about the paid parking downtown, they said, "Well, we've gotta have that to drive people into the parking garage." I didn't vote for that. Did y'all vote for that? We didn't get a chance to vote for that. $19 million expenditure for a parking garage that nobody wanted, that was going to be the first phase of a catalyst project, to go ahead and build a ballpark, to build a hotel. We didn't ask for that. We didn't ask for it. So now, why should we have to foot the bill on the backside of it so that they can pay for the parking garage? They should've thought about that to start with. It was unfair when it was done. The, the red light cameras are unconstitutional. Why would you wanna add something that's going to be a thing of the past? The, the truth of the matter is, is that they've already been deemed unconstitutional. Thank you.
I don't understand why our city council can't figure out ways to make money without hurting you guys, hurting us. I mean, they, they just wanna take money out of our pocketbooks that we work hard for. You know, there are innovative ways to bring the city money without doing those things. They can put advertisements on our buses. They, you know, there's lots of things that they can do. And that's why this group back here, they're innovative, they're all smart, they got great ideas. You know, we are all on the same page and, and it's time for a change. It's time to stop using red light cameras and parking fees to gouge you guys more.
This question is kind of a, a two-parter here. It's two different questions about the same area. The first one was, what would you do to keep the American Quarter Horse Association, uh, American Quarter Horse Association in Amarillo? The Amarillo Quarter Horse Association equals 200 jobs. The other, I said, it's kinda the same question. What would you do to attract new businesses to Amarillo? And how would you help the small businesses and businesses that are already here in Amarillo?
The American Quarter Horse showed up here in 1947 in the back of a Dodge pickup. And since then, it has been, has been overlooked by the city of Amarillo. The truth of the matter is, they've taken little interest in going ahead and trying to promote that as, as a viable part of our community. The hot, I think they had over 375 jobs out there. The truth of the matter is, is, is there is no reason that should leave. We should do everything within our power to go ahead and maintain that. That's what we have an economic development corporation for. I don't understand what the division is, why they're so interested in bringing in things like the vet school and they're not interested in trying to preserve the jobs that we already have. So, when you start looking at that, all of those things should factor into reducing the operations costs, reducing the expansion costs. We've got a, we've got a department down there that people are having a hard time getting licensing through. Thank you.
Do you really blame them for leaving?
No.
You know, they, they have been having a lot of their events out in Fort Worth where there's, I believe, a brand-new convention center. The MPEV, what they call the MPEV, which is really a baseball park, was supposed to be something that we could use year-round for events, for lots of things. But we have it for, what, six months out of the year? So we really need to get to work on the Civic Center project and expand that and get it going so that maybe we can offer something to keep them here.
I, I wanna say, one of my biggest fears is I wanna acknowledge Amarillo Quarter Horse, but also our rodeo culture. My biggest fear is if we lose those things, quarter horse and rodeo culture, that's losing our heritage. And I've said before, Amarillo historically is a cowboy town. And that's, that's one of the best things about Amarillo. Amarillo is not a baseball town, we are a cowboy town. And I've said before, we need to preserve the culture we already had instead of force-creating culture we didn't need in the first place. If we lose the quarter horse and we lose our rodeos, not only are we going to be losing income and infrastructure and hotel rooms, but we're gonna be losing our history. That's Amarillo's history, that's our heritage and that's what matters to me. I'm not a cowboy, but I love that heritage and that's why I love Amarillo. And we need to protect it at all costs, not just because of the money that brings our city, but it is our city. That's our city.
Well, like, well, like, like Tom said, we got an AEDC that bring, that is supposed to bring in new businesses. You know, I, the only way I can really frame this is by saying, we've got five children and we, we had a son in the, in the last five years. Now, if we ignore our oldest son, what's he gonna do? He's gonna act out. He's gonna act out. And that's what happens when you ignore, when you ignore anything, when you ignore a part of town. When you, when you start taking services from different parts of town, when you, when you ignore the streets, ignore the, ignore the curbsides, ignore the businesses around these, these historical monuments, they leave. They act out, they leave. And that's what happens. We need a council that cherishes its history as well as its future. That's all I...
You know, we're where we are because we have a city council that looks outside of Amarillo for everything. And we have to stop doing that. We have to, we have to be part of the community. We have to keep, like he said, the culture. You know, when I moved to Amarillo, the TV stations used to say, "We're a big city with a small-town attitude." And I thought that was great. And we're losing it. And we can't lose it. We have to keep our culture, we have to keep the community that we have, we have to take care of the whole city. And we need to take, support our local businesses. We need to, to promote our local businesses. You know, like, like someone said, the sod poodles. You know, they were so excited about bringing the sod poodles in. Why aren't they that excited about the American Quarter Horse Museum? Or about the rodeos? Or about the other sports teams we have here in Amarillo? You know, if we keep on the trend we're going, we're gonna lose a lot more than just the American Quarter Horse Museum and we're gonna have nothing but the sod poodles. And I'm not a baseball fan, but I, I'm happy for anyone who loves baseball. But we need more than just the sod poodles. We need our Quarter Horse Museum, we need our rodeos, and we need all of those things.
Mr. Brown brought up the Civic Center. Explain y'all stance on the Civic Center and the renovations on Civic Center. What y'all think about that?
You know, when they started talking about the MPEV, baseball field, whatever you wanna call it, the conversation, I don't remember who it was that had it, but I remember a conversation came up, "Well, why don't we renovate the Civic Center?" And they said, "No, we gotta have the baseball field first." And I thought that was the stupidest thing I ever heard. We need to renovate what we have. Take care of what we've got. We should've taken care of the Civic Center first. Unfortunately, we didn't. So now here we are. Now we're gonna have to go back through it all again and we're gonna have to, got this committee going to get the Civic Center again. And I am for this renovating Civic Center, I love that. But I, I hate the fact that it's probably gonna cost us more money than it should, it's gonna end up being some overloaded program if we don't watch it very carefully. So I really think we do need the Civic Center, I just think it's a crying shame that we got the sod poodles first.
I, I often, again, frame this in, in, in the House and I say, you know, it's, it's sort of like, we, we renovated our backyard, we got a brand-new flat-screen TV for our patio and, and a, a outdoor grill and, and brand-new sod and brand-new fence, but the inside of our house is falling apart. And, and that's, that's what I equate the, the ballpark to. Is we, we took, took our eye and our resources off of the rest of the city and, and there you have it, downtown. Which, which is everybody's problem. But that, that's ultimately, I, I lost it, but I just, I think we, we should've focused on what we had and, and what we could've used our resources for in a, in a more responsible and, and logical way than, than dumping it in a ballpark.
For 10 years, for 10 years, we took our eye off of Amarillo. For 10 years, we had elected officials that took their eyes off of Amarillo. They took our money, they funneled it from every department, every place that they could grab it out of the budget and they built the ballpark. And they built a trifecta is what they called it. They built a host hotel and they built the, the baseball park and, and they built the parking garage. They did all of those things. And now, the, I'm, I'm for renovating the Civic Center, I'm for building a new Civic Center, but the biggest problem that we have is, how are we going to be able to fund that? It's like, if you take a trip to Hawaii, how are you gonna get new plumbing in your house when you get back? And so, although I may be for it, the truth of the matter is, is I haven't seen yet how it's going to pan out to go ahead and operate and pay back the debt service for the MPEV, for the parking garage, for all of these things that have to be paid for. Because nobody's talking about the parking garage. We have to look at these things and know that at some point, it's gonna come back to our tax bill.
I, I have to echo what Tom said in terms of, I've had people ask me about renovating the Civic Center and I've said, "I'm all for it, but I'm terrified. Can we even pay for that because of the debt we've accumulated?" I've said before that I felt like with the ballpark, it felt like we built the amusement park on top of the volcano. I felt like there were so many things wrong that we should've fixed first. Again, I, I wish we could've aggressively gone after rodeo culture because that should've been the very first and foremost thing we should've done. Because we're paying for the ballpark with hotel occupancy taxes. I'm sorry, rodeos fill up more hotel rooms than ballgames do. So how are we gonna pay for the ballpark with hotel occupancy taxes if we're losing the main resource we have to fill hotel rooms? Think about that. So, I'm all for renovating the Civic Center so Lubbock doesn't get all the, the great shows and we're left with nothing because we can't host them. But I hope we have the money down the line because at this point, I don't know if we, we have that income to do that right now, sadly.
Going last again. I guess I'm the one who brought up Civic Center, so there you go. It does need to be renovated and, you know, what these guys said, you know, we gotta get in there and look at the budget before we can determine whether it's even feasible at this point. You know, it may be something that has to sit on the back burner for a few years, but it is important to our community. You know, it does hold a lot of events and it could hold more if we were able to renovate it and get it to maybe even a bigger size, hold more people and, and have more revenue. So, yeah, absolutely, we need to, but we gotta find the money to do it.
What would you do in office to keep the taxes down?
Well, there's a lot of things that you can do, but I think one of the first things that we need to do is we need to do a review of what's been spent, where it's been spent and make sure there's not any waste going on. We need to get our waste in control. And we need to make sure that we're not spending money on crazy projects that's gonna cost us millions and millions of dollars that we don't have. So it's gonna take a careful look at everything, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to probably tighten our belts a little bit. And it's not gonna be fun right away, but this is where we're at. You know, I've, as a single mom, I've had to pinch pennies till they scream and they make a very distinct sound. And we're probably gonna hear a lot of that in Amarillo. And we need to. And it's not gonna be fun and it's gonna be tough and we're gonna have to make really hard decisions. And there's probably gonna be times that, that if I'm elected and that we do this, they're probably gonna have to say, "Look, I'm sorry, y'all, but we just don't have the money." You know, and I don't wanna do that. So I wanna try to find ways to trim things, you know, do things that's economical, but is good, but economical. We don't need to make money for people that already have money. We need to take care of our town with the money we have.
Well, I think that bad decision-making goes a long way to increasing your tax bill. And I think that we've all been victims of that. As an elected official, I'm going to do everything that I can to ask, I'm not just gonna ask once, I'll ask multiple times, "Why are we doing this? Why do we need this? Why do we think it's the best? Have we gone and seen if that's the best practice? Have we gone and seen if that's the best value? Why, why is this project costing this much? How do you know this person?" I don't think anybody on the council has ever asked one of their, their fellow council people, "How do you know this person? Why are we going with this person? What is, what is the thought process behind that?" So, the best thing that can be done from, from this room is to... So the best thing that can be done from this room is to find your incumbents and vote for somebody else. You have a better chance, I hate to keep saying that, but you have a better chance of lightning striking twice in the same place than these guys that you've got elected right now, they're gonna do the right thing.
I am a huge proponent for the legislation they're trying to pass at the state right now for the tax cap. I think it's important that we only raise taxes if we have a good reason to. And you guys should have a say in that. You should be able to say, "We want this, we understand it's going to raise taxes," and so we have to have you vote on that. And if you don't want it, then we don't raise your taxes. That's just how it should be.
I believe that, again, what a lot of people said, there needs to be an open investigation into how our city's budget and our money is being spent, because I do believe there is a lot of suspicious things going on. The thing is, it's not so much that Amarillo needs to tighten its belt, I think we just need to put the belt back on. I think that's more of the issue we're looking at, that we're looking at right now. But I believe even downtown, I've told a lot of people that I think there should be an open investigation into the spending downtown. If nothing suspicious went on, good, we don't have to talk about it anymore. If something did go on that was suspicious, then we know about it, we can start fixing it. Because it's not so much, really quickly, I'll say, if somebody asked me, "Would you be for your taxes going up to pay for the Thompson Park pool?", I would say, "Of course." But if you ask me if I wanted my taxes to go up for entertainment like a ballpark, I would say, "No." But the thing is, I'm starting to get worried about suspicious property value raisings that will happen, where your property value randomly just went up, but I don't think those type of things are random. And that's what, that's what I'm worried about.
Well, again, I'm gonna echo a lot of what everybody said. You know, taxes should be raised because the people want them raised or because they see the reward with the risk. Like Hayden said, if somebody comes to me and says, "Do you think that your taxes should be raised because, you know, for the Thompson Park pool, it's gonna be raised a couple cents a month for so many years?", definitely, definitely. I'll take that hit. Again, for an MPEV baseball field that I just don't think is rational, no. So that's my opinion. I think that any tax raises should be left to the citizens. And that's what I got for you.
Last question, very last question. Where do you see yourself in five years and where do you see Amarillo within five years?
I see myself doing the exact same thing I'm doing today, working, running my business. I'm not a career politician, I'm not trying to make any more money, I've got enough stuff to try and say grace over. I've got all of the things that I volunteer for, I try and do the right thing every time and that's why I'm standing up here. Where I see Amarillo in five years is Amarillo is going to be in a very, very bleak, dire position if we don't actually elect some officials that are going to work within our best interest. That's watching your tax bill, watching things that happen, putting up some charter amendments onto the ballot so that we can choose single-member districts, actually watching the way those districts are drawn. If we don't start being proactive now and make a long-range commitment to go ahead and reelect good people every time, if you only elect people once and then you take your eyes off of it, nothing's ever going to happen. We elected some decent people back in '15, we ended up with these people in '17, and now we've got problems.
In regards to where I'll be in five years, I'm gonna be honest, this time last year, I never would've ever have thought I would be running for city council in Amarillo. But the thing is, this has been one of the most wonderful experiences for me ever because I've always lived in this town and there's things I've wanted to see changed. And finally, I realized, I can say these things, I can tell people that there's things we need to change. I can tell my friends that are 22 and 23 that wanna get out of Amarillo, "Hey, maybe stay here and start talking about what you wanna see different," because they're not listening to you, so you need to go to them and start saying it. I hope in five years, I'm gonna be honest, my chances of winning city council right now probably aren't the greatest. I'm gonna say that. But I hope in five years during that time, hopefully after this, if I don't win, I can get elected to Amarillo City Council, because this is just the start for me and I'm excited for the start. And I wanna start influencing people my age to get involved and start making some positive changes and utilizing that population. But that's where I hope to see, hope to see Amarillo in five years, is I hope to see a more thoughtful city, that's more caring of its residents, that utilizes the people that live here and takes their input.
In five years, I will be forward. I will be, I will be moving forward, just like Hayden says. Would I have seen myself in this spot five years ago? Absolutely not. If somebody would've told me, "You're gonna be running for city council and people are gonna take you seriously and people have already sent in mail-in ballots for you," you're crazy. But in five years, I know I'll be progressed forward because I can't, I can't go backwards. The experiences that I've learned on this journey have enriched my life more than anything I can think of. And so I know in five years, I hope that you would have elected at least three of us in office and you'll see a movement happen in Amarillo City. Instead of another five years of the same old, same old, the same old lies, or, sorry. All right.
Well, assuming I get elected, what I see in five years is a booming town with a great economy and most importantly of all, my daughter moving back to Amarillo so I could see my grandbabies. That's what I want.
One of the biggest criticisms of my run for city council, place number three, is that I've only lived here for just over a year. But I've set my roots in here and in five years, I still see myself here in Amarillo, volunteering, working in the community and making things better. And as for the city, in five years, that's gonna depend on what you guys do on election You cannot vote for the incumbents if you want to see the city go in the right direction.
Keep going for the challengers, ladies and gentlemen.